All the commissioners meeting for Monday, March 7th take the order. And we'll take a floor vote on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a say. All the voters say aye. All opposed. Most will give. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here. And you'll please bow your head to all these worship prayer.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day we've had today. And thank you for all the many blessings that you give us. Please bless our military, our first responders, fire and police. And bless the people that make this happen today. And I thank thee in Jesus' name, I pray, amen. Nobody signed up for public comment? Is there anyone that would like to come forward and address any matters? If not, we'll move on. Next thing is the Consolidated Health and Human Services Board appointments. And the presenter is Dolly Clayton for the Health and Human Services Director. Thank you, Doc.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present before you. In your pocket, you have the recommendation from the Consolidated Human Services Board for Mr. Wendell Dry. He has previously served one term on our board and has reapplied to serve a second term. He is the only applicant who meets the criterion of engineer that has applied.
Just have one position then.
Well, we technically have another vacant position for, I think, a psychiatrist, but we don't have any current applicants for that position. That position's been vacant the whole time that the Consolidated Board's been around.
Okay.
Saying it wouldn't qualify.
He's a psychologist.
Okay, well, we make notice that we got a position open then. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Wendell Dry be reappointed to his second four-year term.
A motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, seven oh.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you, Dolly. Next thing on the agenda is the Airport Authority Board Appointments. And the presenter is Randy Shank, the Airport Director. Hey, Randy.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you have in your packet there, two current Airport Authority Board member terms, Mr. James Faust and Ms. Jacqueline Plumley are up for reappointment. Mr. James Faust is currently serving in the place of David Rudisell, who had resigned on nine six of twenty-three. As this is a partial term, he is eligible for his first term of full service if reappointed. Ms. Jacqueline Plumley is currently completing her first full term and is eligible for her second and final term of board appointment. Each appointment would be for a full four-year term expiring on the thirty-first of March 2029. I do need to point out, in the consideration portion of it down there, it says the new appointments will be effective on oh-one April 2025, which is true, and installed at the Airport Authority Board Members Meeting, but that's actually also on the first of April, not the eighth of April is noted there.
Yeah, you have the two present that's up for reappointment. Do I have any motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. James Faust and Ms. Jacqueline Plumley.
Okay, I have the motions, that, I have a second. Okay, a second. Now, we have any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Jacqueline Plumley and we also appoint Christina Brown.
And I would also like to appoint an old-time part of the Airport Director, Gerald Efferd. We want to take these one at a time, or you want to do all of them?
One at a time, since they're nominations. I think you need to do one, but you'd only be able to vote two.
Okay, all right.
I would do one at a time, since you did them sort of as nominations. Is that correct?
We all got two votes.
Correct.
All right. Let's start with Mr. Faust. All in favor of reappointing Mr. James Faust, raise their hand. One, two, three, four. And I missed the other lady's name.
Jacqueline Plumley.
Jacqueline Plumley. All right, all in favor of Jacqueline Plumley, please raise your hand. All in favor now for Ms. Christina Brown for appointment, please raise your hand. And all in favor of Gerald Efferd. I'll raise my hand on that one since I nominated him as a one. All right, it looks like that our new members will be Mr. Faust and I keep forgetting her name.
Kathleen Plumley.
Plumley, Kathleen Plumley.
Jacqueline Plumley.
Jacqueline Plumley, okay, that's the two new reappointees then.
All right, thank you.
All right, next is Utilities.
Utilities Budget Amendment twenty-five through sixty-four, third-party utility damage. Presenter, Mr. Dwayne Wingo, Utilities Director. Hey, Dwayne.
Thank you, Chairman Barby, Commissioners. Action Item forty-four thirty-seven, Budget Amendment for Third-Party Utility Damage. Stanley County Utilities Department is requesting a budget amendment for the March seventeenth twenty-five, twenty twenty-five meeting to transfer revenue funds received from third-party utility damage to the Utilities Repair Expense Account. Revenues for third-party utility damage were received from an industrial user via check for an accidental discharge from the industry's process machinery wastewater tanks that entered into the county sewer collection system and damaged two grinder pumps. Pump and haul operations had to be temporarily employed until the new grinder pumps could be procured and installed. Staff is recommending approval of the budget amendment to transfer the funds from revenue back into the expense account.
Are there any questions, Motherboard?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
I'm gonna probably have a bunch, you know, in time. How do you tell when a grinder, when the solid waste, how did you know that this?
We've had incidents in the past from this particular industrial user. The components are plastic shavings as part of their industrial process. Grinder pumps have, basically what they do is grind up the solids so that they can be transferred by a small diameter mains, generally three inch to two inch, even one and a quarter inch in some instances, but they're smaller pump stations. And because the smaller diameter force main, you have to have grinder pumps that grind up that solid to send it through the line. So what happened here was we, when the pumps started working, the plastic and other materials from these tanks got up in there and damaged the heads to where the motors burn up and we had to pull them out and pump and haul.
Thank you.
Have they always been good to deal with about?
Recently, yes, they've been a lot more cooperative. They've finally got a person in charge of the industry that is dealing with us as their industrial pre-treatment liaison, and he has taken some very good measures to try to correct some situations. It wasn't always so in the past, but recently it has improved. Yes.
Dwayne, who is "they"?
That would be Fibron.
Thank you.
That ten thousand dollars, that includes the motor and the?
Yeah, these are small pumps. It's, Fibron's the only customer on that line.
Thank you. I guess there'd be no other expense to the county then, except for that.
No, we just wanted to be made whole, and that's why we requested damages for what to make us whole.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation, or I'd like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommended approval of the budget amendment twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four. I cannot speak tonight. Did y'all get that?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second?
Know what I meant.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. And you also got the next one, Dwayne.
Thank you. The next item is?
Your master plan?
Yes, sir. The next item is action item forty-four thirty-nine, the Sewer Master Plan. Stanley County, in collaboration with Chambers Engineering, has completed a comprehensive sewer master plan designed to strategically guide the wastewater infrastructure investments across the county. This plan provides a detailed roadmap for addressing current system conditions, future growth demands, and prioritizing capital improvements over the next twenty-plus years. This presentation was shared with the board at the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five retreat, and we are now seeking approval of the twenty twenty-five Sewer Master Plan and authorization to utilize system development fee funds to initiate an updated five-year sewer system development fee analysis. The primary purpose of the Sewer Master Plan is to provide Stanley County with a strategic long-term framework for wastewater infrastructure management. The plan included mapping and documentation of the existing wastewater infrastructure, comprehensive condition assessment and criticality ratings, demographic studies and wastewater flow projections, and identification and prioritization of capital improvement projects that are needed. This extensive analysis ensures Stanley County can proactively manage its wastewater assets, maintain regulatory compliance, and support sustainable growth. As part of the master planning process, Chambers Engineering conducted a thorough condition assessment and criticality rating for all significant wastewater assets. The condition assessment dealt with the most vertical assets, pump stations, treatment plants, and they scored between good and fair, and the linear assets were generally satisfactory, except for the aging gravity lines in the Baden, in the Greater Baden District, identified as needing significant rehabilitation and replacement. Criticality ratings, key assets such as the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant, McCoy pump station, airport pump station number one, and D Street pump station received high criticality ratings due to their importance in maintaining service reliability and regulatory compliance. Population growth projections indicate continued development pressure in several areas within Stanley County. These demographic trends drive projected increases in wastewater flow necessitating strategic infrastructure expansions and upgrades as outlined in this master plan. The CIP identified approximately one hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in prioritized projects spanning short-term, one to five years, midterm, six to fifteen years, long-term, sixteen to twenty years, and future horizons, thirty years and beyond, in the planning process periods. The key five-year projects and driver of a system development analysis would include the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant expansion, which is forty million dollars estimated budget. The expansion is, or the project would be, the expansion of a one-point-two MGD facility to a two-point-five million gallon per day facility to accommodate growth in the western service areas and upgrade of the McCoy Regional Pump Station in parallel Force Main. The next project was the Stanley County Regional Pump Station in Outfall with future capital projected cost of twenty-four million. This is essential infrastructure improvements that support regional growth and vital to ensure the adequate transportation of sewer flows from Locust and Stanfield to the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant. In the five-year, also is included the McCoy pump station existing Force Main replacement, roughly two-point-five million, due to the criticality improvements. As you're aware, we've had some issues with the Force Main this fall, and there are other sections that'll need to be replaced in the coming years. We also had Juneberry Ridge Sewer Extension, which was a two-point-three million dollar project, that the service extension was support economic development, which is a hundred percent grant funded. We're currently waiting on the Juneberry Ridge to give us direction on whether that project would move forward or not. And then we had a small project, the Highway two oh five master meter, which was to ensure our proper sewer flow monitoring of the flows coming from the Red Cross area into Oakboro. Now, to effectively fund these critical infrastructure improvements, system development fees play a vital role in financing growth-related capital projects. An updated sewer system development fee analysis is recommended to ensure the fees accurately reflect current costs and future infrastructure demands. The twenty twenty-five Sewer Master Plan represents a proactive approach toward managing Stanley County's wastewater infrastructure by comprehensively addressing immediate needs while strategically planning for future growth. Approval today ensures continued service reliability, environmental stewardship, and financial sustainability, as well as responsible community development for the decades ahead. Today's staff is requesting that the Stanley County Board of Commissioners approve the comprehensive twenty twenty-five Sewer Master Plan as presented by Stanley County Utilities Department and completed by Chambers Engineering. In addition, staff request authorization to use existing system development fee funds to initiate an updated sewer system development fee analysis and a financial forecast evaluation of the upcoming five-year CIP projects listed in the Sewer Master Plan. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Dwayne, in the, when we did the system of development fees last time, I'm assuming it's four, four years ago, five years?
Twenty twenty-two, yes, sir.
Yeah, do you know what the approximate number was? This one identifies one hundred and eighty-seven million dollars for priority projects.
I would have to go back and look at that, because that, like, that again, that one hundred and eighty-seven is over a thirty-year period. What I was concentrating on this evening was the five-year and being able to get those two critical projects, being the sewer treatment plant, the McCoy upgrades, and the regional pump station between Locust and Stanfield, but I will go back and give you that number.
I'm just curious, because that number?
Well, we only did a five, yeah, we only did a five-year last time, as you recall, and the purpose, we did a, we had a completed long-term water master plan that went out, you know, thirty, twenty years or thirty years, but the sewer, we only did a five-year, and the reason we did that was because we didn't have the funding in place to do a, or a grant, this was done by grant, so we didn't have that in place. All we did was the five-year, which included the plant, I believe, some sewer to Red Cross, and that was about it. So we don't really, we didn't really have anything beyond five years when we did it in twenty twenty-two.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody outside, any questions?
I do. Dwayne, forgive me for, I just want to make sure, and maybe some of the questions I have, some of the public might also have. You spoke about Fibron being one that used a lot of waste. What is, what, have you got any idea what facility or who, like a meat processing plant, who really throws a lot of the waste that you have to treat?
Well, Fibron is actually not in West Stanley.
Right, right, I'm just talking about overall.
But back to Fibron, they're up in New London, it's a small station, it's not a lot of flow, but as far as large contributors of waste stream, a lot of it is residential. I mean, Charlotte Pipe and Foundry does contribute a significant amount, it's not as much as you think, but it's really hard to pinpoint the largest sewer users because they're, come from the towns of Oakboro, town of Stanfield, town of Locust, so, you know, I could go back and look, but there's no real one contributor that just, you know, asserts itself much higher than the rest of them. I mean, obviously, there's various industries out there.
So if we had an industry come in that was a major, I'm gonna just use, like, a processing plant for an example, say it was huge, would this cause a problem with a waste treatment plant?
We have an industrial pretreatment ordinance in place, so there would be negotiations between us and the industry to pretreat their waste to a standard that could be accepted at our wastewater treatment plant. So that's general practice throughout municipal industries as far as the industrial pretreatment component. Charlotte Pipe and Foundry, for instance, they have an industrial pretreatment permit, which we did negotiate with them to get their treatment levels down to an acceptable standard.
Do you have any idea how many tons of sludge accumulates at a wastewater, just say, West Stanley? How many tons of slum accumulates?
Well, I pump it out based on a gallons basis, which that, that solid concentration is two percent, but we're pumping out every?
Say, per month?
Five times a year, times forty thousand gallons, so you're talking two million gallons times eight-point-four-three, which is a pounds and a gallon, then multiply that point-two percent, and that'll give you the calculation of sludge. I can't do all that in my head, but that's generally what, what we're looking at as far as sludge.
And that's just sludge?
That's just sludge, yes.
Is sludge, are you able to, do you have to take that to landfill?
Some people can get it to a, if you can get it to a solids concentration around five percent, yes, you may be able to take it to a landfill, but unfortunately, you know, landfill has certain criteria that they look at that sludge as far as what, you know, pollutants are in it and whether they'll accept it or not. What we do is it is hauled by liquid via Senegro to fields where it is land applied on the fields.
So you can put that on agricultural field and it not go into the creeks, and they don't have to worry about that?
Yeah, it is absorbed in the soil, but there is permits on those fields, and they got to make sure that the sludge does not build up the metal contents over an extended period of time. If it does, they'll shut down the field and you can't discharge to it anymore.
Does Stanley County use the trickling filter process?
No, sir, we do not.
Yeah.
I was just gonna add, I don't know if this, your question was about a processing plant and whether or not, what that would do. I think the question is what our capacity is at the current time for treating additional waste.
Right.
And so, you know, right now, we have a wastewater treatment plant in Baden that doesn't have much capacity, we have a wastewater treatment plant in West Stanley that doesn't have much capacity, Albemarle does, and so if there was a food processing plant, we would try to locate it in the northern end of the county that, where that basin flows to the Albemarle plant or an Albemarle, because that would really be the only wastewater treatment plant that could handle a food processing company at this time. So I hope that maybe answered your question.
Thanks for doing that. Does DEQ take samples very often?
We are required to report to DEQ our monthly samples.
Each month?
As far as BOD, oxygen, and other constituents, so we do send those reports in as part of a monthly EDMR report.
In a pump station, you're taking water and lifting it up because you're working off of gravity, right?
Yes, sir.
Most cases.
Pump stations in this region are very prominent just due to the topographic limitations. Not everything runs in a uniform grade downhill. You have hills and valleys throughout the county, and in those areas, pump stations, everything comes down to the pump station, then pumps out of that, out of that bottom.
You have to pump it up, so it'll go back down.
So it'll go back down another hill, yes.
And I think when we were at a meeting, Mr. Chambers said that a new pump station would cost somewhere between seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to?
It depends on the size of the station. That would be an average cost for an average station, something that would pump around two to three hundred gallons per minute, which is a fair-sized station. Smaller stations are cheaper. You've got pump stations that'll pump fifteen hundred GPM, those things cost millions of dollars.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything? I'd like to, I was doing some reading, and I don't know if it was in North Carolina, but that's a bad thing, I should have checked a little further, but system development fees are charged in some states are used for the number of, like, if you got a development up to a hundred houses, it'd be one cost, and then a hundred to five hundred will be another cost, and then more. Is that not what we could apply here to some of our developments?
Unfortunately, I think the way the North Carolina statutes read, and we would have to research that to answer that one hundred percent, but I believe it's treated all the same as what's an equivalent dwelling unit of one house. It doesn't matter if it's one house or if it's a thousand houses, and whatever that rate is per bedroom, you also have a, they have a chart in CDQ where they look at restaurants, industries, where they calculate those flows, and really, it's based on a gallon per day, but your system development fee goes back to a single residential home unit, and that's their base unit that they charge SDFs for that amount of flow, whatever it might be. And then if an industry comes in, then their fees are associated. But the board obviously sets fees based on meter sizes, so we have built into our current SDF some reductions in system development fees for bigger meter sizes which accommodate
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve five-year plan.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Thank you.
Next thing is nine-one-one EOC warehouse facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As an update, we've gotten the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amounts, for the construction of the nine-one-one EOC Emergency Management Facility and the associated shared warehouse space with the state of North Carolina, the Office of State Fire Marshal, and the North Carolina National Guard. It's recommended the county utilize general fund reserves, cash for its portion of the warehouse facility, given that the state is also paying cash for their share of the facility. They're actually paying cash for the whole thing, everything, phase one and phase two. It's recommend the county secure a loan for the balance of the nine-one-one EOC EM facility, and I've given the breakdown of the cost details, the fifty percent share of the counties for the warehouse, and then what our balance of our costs, net balance of our costs will be for the nine-one-one EOC Emergency EM facility. The question, there was a question asked last time about operating costs. We project those to be about sixty thousand dollars for natural gas, electricity, water, sewer, per year. Now, keep in mind, we're gonna see a decrease at the courthouse because we're not gonna be using that facility to the extent that it's being used today. It'll just be a backup facility that'll be dark, other than, you know, the servers have to run in the background, but it'll essentially be dark unless we have an emergency, we have to, we have to bring that site up as a backup site. And so you'll see cost savings at that facility that will, to offset some of the, the new costs at the new facility. And then, so that represents the two grants that we received to, for three-point-four million dollars. I've attached a budget amendment to recognize the funds for the warehouse facility, that'll get that project going. We've told them that we can't move forward with a nine-one-one EOC EM facility, even though we have a guaranteed maximum price, until we get the details around the financing and bank bids back. We had a conversation with the local government commission on Thursday last week, and they said that the projections we were using were conservative, so they felt really good about where we were in terms of what we had projected for debt service, and so I feel good about that. Toby's pulled that together, and we should be able to bring that to you possibly the first meeting in April, since we have, the way the calendar falls with the thirty-first being in March, so now will be April seventh, so we may be able to bring those to you, but certainly by the April twenty-fourth meeting. With us being on the LGC's agenda for June, I think the only concern I have is the, but there's escalation built into the guaranteed maximum price from Barn Hill. My only concern is tariffs in metal and aluminum and those things, and wood and from Canada, and what that may impact, how that may impact the cost of the building between now? between now, um, and lead time stuff like electrical components, um, the switch gear for that. Those are long lead time things and could take anywhere from, you know, eight to twelve months to, to, to get on-site, and so those are a little bit of my concern of, you know, waiting for everything till June. So we may come back and ask for a reimbursement resolution in conjunction with the financing. All that does is say that we, we can spend money, then we'll reimburse ourselves with the loan proceeds for that money, once we get the loan closed in, in June. And so that would enable us then to procure those long lead time items so that we don't, don't, doesn't delay the project any further or run the risk of price volatility. So, um, but this evening, we're just asking you to take action on the budget amendment that will, you know, we did, previously, you all did a budget amendment that took care of all the site work, our cost of the site work. This would be all of our cost of the, of the warehouse facility, and so all, it's, all will be left as the nine-one-one EOC facility, um, for us to take action on once we, um, get the bank financing bids, and then we'll come back to you for that. Um, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know I put some photos in here of nine-one-one EOC as well as the warehouse facility and sort of the elevation of that, um, so you would have some idea of what that facility will look like. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
County manager, I, I do, I guess I'm confused somewhat.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at, what page is this?
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, I'm looking at, let's see. Warehouse facility, twenty-seven thousand three hundred ten square feet.
Yes, sir.
Four million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand three sixty-one.
Yep.
And that's gonna be split between state and the county.
Yeah, we're roughly, we're using about fifty percent of that building and they're using roughly fifty percent of that building.
Our part of two million three eighty-eight, six eighty, coming from general fund.
Cash, yep. We'd initially planned on about five point six, five point five for this building. You just previously did three point two five, so this will essentially be the balance of that.
And then the nine-one-one EOC FM facility, uh, a grant of a million dollars, I guess we've received.
We have, we, we're holding those funds currently. We're in our bank account.
Then you got, uh, board, nine-one-one board grant, two point four million, and then you have a net balance of eight million four hundred forty-four thousand.
Yep.
Is that the amount that you're going to-
Ask the banks for financing. Yeah, we'll actually ask for eight point five, just to give us a little bit of contingency there.
Okay, and what kind of terms are you gonna ask?
We're asking for a twenty-year loan term. Um, we believe that there'll be, um, financial institutions that will respond to that. Um, we, but we, our projection was based on twenty years, five percent. Um, based on our conversation with the LGC, they felt like that was a conservative number. So they've, they've seen numbers lower than that, um, in the, in the past few months for similar-sized financing, so.
Are those the numbers you're asking for approval?
I'm asking, the number I'm asking for approval this evening, we'll, we'll come back and ask for the financing approval, once I get the bank bids back, cause then I'll know exactly what they're, what that interest rate. The, the number I'm asking for approval tonight is the two point, um, three nine million for, um, the, that'll cover our entire portion of the warehouse facility, and so that will be done and out of the way.
And that is general?
That'll be general fund, coming from general fund reserves. And we had initially, all of our planning had, was to spend about five and a half million dollars of our funding, of our general fund dollars for this facility, so we've, we did the three point two five a couple meetings ago, and this is, this is sort of shoring up that, that balance of what I had projected to be able to use, and still keep us a, a close to that thirty percent mark of general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year.
I'm glad you asked that question, Bill, cause I was kinda confused. Um, anybody else have any questions? Attorney nine, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that, uh, we approve the, um, two point three eight, or three point nine.
That's two point three nine, yeah.
Yeah, from general funds.
You mean two point nine, right?
Two point three nine.
Two point nine.
Two point three nine, I believe, is the, two point three nine million. Yes, correct.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you, Jim. Ladies, thank you.
Hey, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I hope everybody's had a chance to look over it.
Motion's approved, consent agenda.
You got a motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Crump, second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay. All right. Next up is board comments and announcements, and I'd like to start over to my left at, uh, Commissioner Billy Mills.
Thank you. Uh, some of the things I've run into this week are Stanley residents being concerned with new housing starts and developers, and, and they're not, you know, we've, we've talked, we talked about, this is in the city limits, about having infill, and they're not really concerned about neighbors being so close, is that the developers are building in areas where there's been a creek, it's consistent, and major floodwater, stormwater runoff, and they were asking me, said Billy, do, do we have a, any kind of floodplain for Stanley County? You know, the, do they realize where they're building their new homes that, and, you know, there's gonna come a time that the pipes might not, you know, but what I'm saying is that we're gonna have to address that, especially the city of Albemarle, but right now, they're sorta making a bad situation that has a potential of a home being flooded because of where they're being built, and there's, as you know, there's many, many houses, and they're being approved. So as we go forward and, and, and look at this, I hope that, you know, the new housing starts and the developers, because, and I don't wanna, you know, badmouth the developers because they do help us, but sometimes we have developers that come in and their number one priority is not Stanley County. And I think, you know, Locust is a great example of having sustainable housing and having houses, people that come in that are, that have a good background, and I think we need to pay attention more so because we had, you know, a hard rain this past week, and I'm afraid that when the summer comes and we have any kind of storm, that there's gonna be a lot of stormwater, and there's already mention of a new stormwater tax that will be coming in. I think we can do of a lot of preventative maintenance right now, especially in the city of Albemarle, and that's really where I'm concerned, and that's the district I represent, and they probably not gonna like me for saying this, but there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we can do to prevent stormwater runoff. One inch of rain is twenty-seven thousand gallons of water, and you have to deal with it, and I don't wanna have to pay a tax to deal with it. I want to be able to build new houses and not put them in a place to where they're gonna flood when we have a, a big storm. Anyway, that's just something the residents had talked to me. Thank you.
Commissioner LaHa.
Speaking of housing, uh, the February twenty-twenty-five new housing permits, total twenty-six, which is a decrease of thirty-five houses or fifty-seven percent, same period of February of twenty-twenty-four. January through February, new home permits, total of sixty, which is a decrease of sixty from the same period, January through February twenty-twenty-four, or fifty percent. So those two months, it's evident that home building has slowed down somewhat. Of course, two months does not make a whole year, but curious to see what happens with housing, uh, permits. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Afry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had a library trustee board meeting last week, and, um, Sarah is back from her maternity leave and her, uh, surgery leave, but, uh, i- if you're not knowing what the library does, man, you're missing out, and Brandon, I, I really appreciate you sort of letting me, letting me do that. That's the only board I've never served on, but if you go to Stanley County's website and you can click library, it'll take you over to their website, but they've got so much going on for the community. I mean, they do yoga, they do book sales, they just do all kinds of stuff there. They play bingo in there, uh, and, and those events are well-attended, so each branch does a little something, but, um, it's, it's something worth, worth looking at if you get a chance to take a look at. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Crump?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Hatton? Mr. King?
I'm good.
That leaves me, and, uh, I'm gonna make it short and sweet too, no comment. Thank you. And, uh, the meeting will be-